Okay, good evening. I call this meeting order at five ten. If I can have a roll call please for item one point zero, one point zero one. Student trustee Carnes, Dr. Little, trustee Lopez.
Present.
Trustee Ramos.
Present.
Trustee Dopplemore.
Present.
President Calhoun. Dr. Curry.
Present.
Item two point zero one. Approval of closed session agenda items. Can I get a motion please?
So.
Okay.
Moved and seconded it. Do we have any discussions? No discussions? And then so need to do roll call here?
No.
Okay.
This online vote.
Okay. I don't see mine with the. That will be an M is yes vote. Okay, thank you. I will move on to agenda item number three. Item number three, request to address the board of trustees on agenda items on close, on closing items.
There are none for closed session.
Okay, thank you so very much. Moving on to three point zero one, do we have any, we said no, you don't have any requests for the board. Agenda item brief point zero two, trustees, do we have any requests for future agenda items? Okay, not moving on. At this time, we'll move on to agenda item four point zero. For agenda item four, request recess to close, close session. Items in accordance with the Ralph M. W. Brown Act Governance Code Section five four nine five zero. And following an education code section seven two, one, two, two, to discuss actions taken on the following items. Right, okay. We'll go into closed session at five ten. We will recess. It is six o'clock. I will. Where am I? Returning from closed session at six P M. On Tuesday, November twenty first. Two thousand twenty three, Sylvia, if I can please get a roll call vote, student trustee Carnes.
Present.
Dr. Little.
Present.
Trustee Lopez.
Present.
Trustee Ramos.
Present.
Trustee Dopplemore.
Present.
President Calhoun. Dr. Curry.
Present.
Okay, moving on to agenda item five point zero two. Please stand and join me as I lead you guys in the pledge of allegiance. It is not to be celebrated, better understand, it's not, so I take a pledge of no naught. Please place your hand over your heart and ready begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you, and you may be seated. Moving on to item six, reported actions in closed session. The, the board's action to ratify acceptance of the resignation. Of an assistant director of facilities, planning and operations. The roll call vote was four to zero, and trustee Calhoun, president, was absent. Yes, okay. Moving on to item number seven. Approval, Dr. Curry, if you could please announce your edits before asking for a motion.
There's one edge to agenda, item number twelve point zero eight. On the curriculum, number on page two, it had to remove the English one hundred from the.
For some information.
For course and activation. From the removal of the course and activation for English one hundred. To remove that from that list of courses. For that, twelve point zero.
Okay, but those edits, I don't have a motion to approve the open session agenda items.
Done.
So move trustee Ramos and seconded by trustee Sonia Lopez. Can I get a roll call Sylvia? Oh, just, um, Doris, do you have any discussions? Thank you. Oh, and we have to do open, right? Do we have any discussions? Seeing none, can I get a roll call Sylvia, please? The motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item eight, request to address the board of trustees on agenda. And non-agenda item matters.
Yeah.
Do we have any?
You do.
Richard Earl from Concerned Citizens of Compton, agenda item sixteen point two, and a non-agenda item auto.
Good evening to the board.
Good evening.
My name is Richard Earl, president of Concerned Citizens of Compton. I don't, I don't like coming here and feeling like I do tonight because of something that hasn't happened. Emily Hart Holyfield's name. It should be up on that library. And we need to have that done as soon as possible. I mean, she was a big part of this school. Why are we wasting time on that? Okay? My next item is Brett Cuman, the auto, auto shop teacher. A very good teacher. Sometime people come over and they'll, and they'll make insinuations about things that are going on. And they're really not happening. I mean, the school, the auto shop is being ran. As it should. I mean, you have a lot of happy students. I mean, if it was wrong, look at it this way. If something was wrong, you'd have a, have a room full of, full of students over here. You don't. You have people coming over here to ask that. We give, we give Brett a little bit of slack. I mean, I don't know how you do that, but you know, he's a good teacher. He does what he's supposed to do. And I'd also like to introduce Mr. Hollyfield's daughter as the new, the new. Vice president of the Concerned Citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Earl. Mika Black to discuss sixteen point two.
Good evening, everybody.
I'm just, just one moment with this, reset the timer, please.
All right, thank you. Firstly, happy belated Veterans' Day to trustee Dopplemore. I didn't know about your service until someone mentioned it on social media, so thank you for that service and your continued service in the community. Secondly, yes, I would like to acknowledge that I have been elected the vice president of the Concerned Citizens, Inc. of Compton. I'm very honored to receive that appointment. I hope to do a very good job. It's one of the things that have come out of speaking publicly on behalf of my grandmother, Emily B. Hart Holyfield, and the issue. Of the, of the Holyfield Library. I'm here today to just update myself and my grandfather, Mr. Benjamin Holyfield. We had a meeting with Dr. Curry about a month ago regarding the changes made to. Policy thirty three twenty. And that is to state that the change is now in the hands of the board. The name change will be at the board's discretion. And we're hoping that with that change that we will move forward on the complete name, restoring it as it originally was, which was Emily B. Hart Holyfield. Thank you for your time and have a good evening.
Thank you. Do we have any?
Yes.
Benjamin Holyfield for agenda item sixteen point two.
Good evening. Welcome.
Let's start with some of the phone. Let's really give you your time.
Thanks.
There it goes. Okay, please, go ahead.
Thank you very much. My name is Benjamin Holyfield, and I'm. I, I just never could understand. How we take away or don't add a name. I never could understand that. Each of you have your names. Proper, in a order. I never could understand it. Emily was on, Emily B. Hart Holyfield. She was on this board for twenty years. Twenty years. And that's all I was hearing, good things about the college and when the college moving forward and so forth. And then. At a time like this. Her name, half of her name is missing. And this community couldn't understand it. No one can understand it. But I believed in the right, doing the right thing, and that the right thing will happen. And thank you, Dr. Curry. We certainly appreciate. Appreciate all the efforts it's going through. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Many see to discuss non-agenda items on every table and learning from past failures.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the world. Okay, I'm here tonight because I have some concerns with just learning from the past failures. And I studied the Morrison University thing when they had. Failures and similar issues when they lost their accreditation. And so my concern is that we don't, as we're moving forward to twenty twenty four. That we don't make these same mistakes. As we're approaching this twenty twenty four, what are some of the programs that will be available to the students and faculty? At Compton Community College. I'm aware of the contract this college has with every table. And I'm pleased to say I think that was a good choice for the students, but I don't agree. With paying for the faculty's food. Because. These are peoples, they get paid wages or salaries in order to pay for their food, lunches, whatever, where to run and see it. That's just my personal opinion. But I feel like if they're employed, they should be able to pay for their own food. And I would like to know who is paying for their food? Where is this money coming from? And what other perks do you have that Compton College is giving out? And is this to retain teachers, faculty? What is it for? Okay, and. I will close with, there need to be more transparency, providing more awareness and a voice that represents the community. Recognizing the unity and community pride we have in Compton College. Okay, and in our community. Thank you for your time, and a happy Thanksgiving to you and your families.
Thank you, Miss Lucy. Deborah asked you to discuss enrollment at Compton and USC partnership.
Good evening.
One moment. Oh, we want to get your, just keep you on the tab.
Good evening. I've been addressing the board for the last. Several months regarding the declining enrollment. Before the. On seventeen, twenty seventeen until now. And I think. Initially was eleven thousand, now for twenty twenty one, it's. Four thousand two thirty six. And for twenty two twenty three is four thousand eighty two, but I was looking at Compton's. Website, I guess, and it shows more. So you have to realize who's telling the truth here. That's one. Two, I'm talking about, I'm interested in that residential housing. I think I brought that up. Who's going to really stay in that house? Initially, that was for homeless students, according to your survey, which I thought was flawed because you didn't get a. Out of seven thousand, you sent emails. I think response was seven hundred, and out of that seven hundred. That's a small percentage to justify eighty million. Nonetheless, that's one thousand. Other pressing issue is the relationship between USC and Compton. There's an article on November the sixth, twenty twenty three, there was a protest regarding USC opening up. Health center on the campus. They cited gentification by the growth of this private industry. For more than a hundred years, USC has come into our communities of South Central Boyle Heights, expanding their campuses. Without accountability. They're going to be housed. What is the partnership? I'm reading, I know I'm. A couple of seconds regarding. The faculty to come here. On the campus. To educate. Why do you need a? USC to educate faculty? My understanding, Dr. Little was or is still is a USC faculty. Can't you help? What, why is there a need to have this institution on campus? What's the point? Will they be a part of this housing? I saw something diversify our campus community. Identify candidate to become members of the Compton College faculty.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We'll be back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have any, anymore? Okay, thank you. Moving on to agenda item eight point zero two. Trustee, do we have any requests for future agenda items? None, okay. Seeing none. We move on to discussion, no discussion, no. Okay, moving on to agenda item number nine. Nine point zero one, minutes of the October seventeenth, twenty twenty three board of trustee meetings. Okay, do we have any discussion? No. Sylvia. Are you ready? Who's getting it? She's getting it. Who's getting it?
I just leave the motions again.
It would be Ramos and trustee Little second. Doctor Yanam is yes vote. Okay, thank you. Moving on to agenda item ten, reports from representatives and employees and organizations. Do we have associate student government president, Crystal Moore, item ten point zero one? If not, we'll move on to agenda item ten point zero two, Dr. Minadora.
Good evening.
Tonight.
Good evening, dear trustees. Good evening, Dr. Curry and fellow guests. I have a slightly longer report than usual today. I am starting with, for first of all, we're thrilled to see the enrollment numbers at Compton College. They're definitely bringing me joy every time I open that, that report that we receive quite daily, and many, I would say probably all of my, my colleagues are as well. Janet Morales, our union president, and I have the task of staffing many of, most of our committees with the faculty positions. And what we have noticed for a while now is that we're having a very difficult time filling those vacant spots. We have a theory as to why that might be happening, but I'll let you draw your own conclusions. I would like us to embark together on a short flight, but before takeoff, I would like us to review the safety instructions. Please make sure you know the exit routes, right? They might be placed in front of you or they might be behind you. Please save, fasten your seatbelts and keep them fastened the entire time so that in case of turbulence, you're nice and safe. Also, in case the cabin pressure drops, masks will be falling from the ceiling, please make sure to fasten your own mask first before aiding to the person next to you. Who might be your child or an elder. Have you ever wondered why they're asking us to fasten our own masks first before attending to those around us? It is because it is impossible to tend to the needs of others while you are lacking needs yourselves. While you're about to pass out because of lack of air, you cannot tend it to someone else. Now, when it comes to faculty, we're not lacking air. We're lacking the financial resources, our salaries, to be able to do our best work in the classroom. And right about now, you might be thinking, this is a union issue. It's not an academic senate issue, is it? Isn't she crossing the line on the other side? Yes and no. It is a union issue, but when a union issue affects academics, it becomes also a senate issue. Stress has the same effect on faculty as it has on students. While we are in distress because we do not know how we're going to pay the bills coming up. We cannot possibly do our best job in the classroom. We cannot possibly take on another committee on top of the mandatory one committee we have, and we regularly have faculty who are on five, six, seven committees. And lately, they're seeing no, because instead of being on another voluntary committee, they're picking up an extra class to teach. So I decided to do a little bit of research on my own as to how does, how do faculty salaries affect student success? And what research shows is that, just like in business, you get what you pay for. When you pay little, you get little, and then we're not talking Dr. Sharoni Little. She's been great. So research shows that there is a direct link between faculty salary and student success and student achievement. You've told us before that your main concern is student success, and ours is as well. But we cannot possibly do our best when we're teaching two, three extra classes, whether here or at other campuses, in order to meet our basic needs. You may have heard of Maslow's hierarchy of needs. That backs us up as well. At the very bottom of the pyramid, the foundation, is basic needs. At the very top is becoming self-actualized. What does that mean for faculty? Means becoming the best teacher that we could be in the classroom. We cannot possibly become self-actualized in our classrooms when we do not know how we're going to meet our basic needs. It also doesn't make business sense to not pay faculty. Now that we've seen that research links faculty salary directly to student success. It makes business sense to pay faculty more. Why? When faculty are paid well, they're able to do their best job in the classroom. Student success goes up, and if you've looked at the funding formula, when student success goes up. The college gets more funds, which in turn pays for the teacher's salaries. It's a vicious cycle. It is just not sustainable that we're about to roll into the year twenty twenty five, and our faculty are working on salaries worthy of twenty fifteen. It is simply not sustainable. So what are the two benefits of having increased salaries? Not only is the student success going to be higher, we will attract better quality faculty, better talent. It will reduce faculty turnover, which is in turn best, best not just for students, but for the campus as a whole. So I, I will close here. I will not keep you any longer. We have Thanksgiving coming up and a few other holidays upcoming. And our tables will be a little less festive than before. Our turkeys will be a little bit smaller, and there will be slightly fewer dishes on the table. So please remember that if you want our, our students to succeed, we have to be cared for as well, and that will conclude my report.
Thank you. Next agenda item ten point zero three from CCCFE certified. Certificated employee report, Janet Morales. You don't look like.
Yes, I was going to say right now, I just want to let the board trustees know, so I'm not Janet Morales. My name is Dr. David Chavez Mendez. I'm a professor here of history and ethnic studies here on campus. I was just hired full-time last year, and I'm very proud to, to be working here at Compton. Compton College. I'm the vice president of, of our Federation of Employees, and so as part of my duties as the vice president, according to my bylaws, is to be here at the, at the board of trustees meeting. So I want to actually take a moment to introduce myself, and then I'll go ahead and share a report, and can I give you all an update about where we're at? So, you know, I already kind of gave you my title and my name, and I just started here, but just a little bit about myself. I was born and raised in Orange County. I'm originally from Santana in La Habra. I grew up the son of a union carpenter and the son of a licensed vocational nurse. And I started my education journey at a community college at Mount San Antonio College is where I started, so I have a lot of love. For here because my experience at community college back in two thousand and four to two thousand and six, I'm dating myself a little bit. Definitely got me very interested right away to be, I want to be part of that. I want to be in the educational space and be able to work with students. In that space because I just saw how dynamic it was, especially for me as a student who really didn't care too much about school, to be honest, at the time. After I graduated from community college, I got involved in the honors program, or at community college, I got involved in the honors program. I did my undergraduate work at UCLA. And because of that as well, I'm really so excited to be teaching our, one of our honors classes here on campus. We have an honors agreement with UCI, so I'm so excited to be able to be supporting students with a pipeline to get into UCI or to other honors programs that we have agreements with. So I'm, you know, putting, putting my best foot forward with that, and I'll be teaching history one oh two honors as well, and I'm very excited to be doing that. After, after UCLA, I worked for four years. I worked in the area that Compton actually serves here. I worked in southeast L.A. as a part educator, the after-school programs. I also worked at the Youth Justice Coalition, which serves young people who are pushed out of L.A. USD, Linwood Unified, Compton Unified, Inglewood Unified. And young people who are just coming home from YA or the youth authority, or from L.A. County Jail. And I worked with them, and they really inspired me to go back to graduate school. Their stories reflected a lot for me growing up and, and the idea and relationship to school, but also learning about the realities of, of what. Dr. Ruth Wilson Gilmore, a professor who I really admire and, and who I study with, calls the, the years of state abandonment that has happened to the community here. Not a neglect, but an abandonment, and I think it's important for us to use that term as an intentionality that, that has been done in terms of divestment. Towards the community that, that we work with here. And so in graduate school is actually how I heard about Compton College. I got my, my bachelor's and my PhD in history and twentieth century U.S. history from University of California Riverside, and there in family housing, has a student parent. I met an alum, Terran Stewart, who is actually on our website, who told me about his educational journey and graduating from here, and he is now one of the most, most important state influencers for. The formerly incarcerated community here in California, but also nationwide, and he's an alum right here from Compton College. That's what got me linked here to be interested in to apply here and be part of the community. So that's a little bit about myself, and I really do want to emphasize that I am proud to serve the students here and have, and I do see a lot of opportunity to, to work here. Being here just, just only one year. And so now I'm going to transition, talk a bit about our negotiating updates. That's me, and you've seen me every, 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 every board meeting. I'll make sure to come and give you my update, but y'all know a little bit about myself, and I'm looking forward to learning a little bit more about y'all. So our union negotiations, our union negotiations team, which I'm a part of, has been actively meeting with the district, and we provided. A proposal for adjusted equitable wage for full-time and part-time faculty back in May of this year. Uh, however, however, the district has not provided us a counter. Um, and the the district's lead negotiator uh continues to propose that we put that bargaining item to the very end. Um, and our compensation to specifically put a dead last. Um, I really think we should not be replicating uh, but instead disrupting this idea of abandonment, right? This term that I used earlier that continues to impact the students we serve and the and our coworkers who live here in the community as well. Um, and as as the saying goes and as um, Dr. Madora was also just uh talking about as well, is that our working conditions do affect our students' learning conditions. And so what does that actually look like in terms of numbers? So the state of California, uh, since two thousand eighteen has approved, uh, the governor's office has approved the cost of living adjustment um, but in total of sixteen point five four percent from two thousand eighteen until now, sixteen point five four percent. And um, our 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 salary schedule for faculty, and when I say faculty, I almost mean our counselors, our librarians, um, our nursing faculty, right, part-time, adjunct, full-time, all all that is, all of us are faculty. In that sense, uh, we've only received a one point five six percent salary increase, one point five six. Cost of living, that's not a, that's not a raise, and that's also, let's let's be very particular with our language. A raise versus cost of living, cost of living is what the state says, you need to actually live to a, to not be uh indebted, right, to not have to go into credit card debt, to be able to pay your bills, to not be um uh rent burdened. But yet in that same period where the state said sixteen point five percent should be given to employees of the state, we've gotten one point five six. Right? And so our working conditions impact the students we serve and we can, we can see it as as um, our my previous, or my colleague just talked about. I'm the head of Academic Senate. So and what does it actually look like of that decision to do that, right? Our district, our our faculty are some of the lowest rates in California. Out of thirteen community colleges that serve our county of LA, we are number thirteen for full-time starting salary, experience, saddledy and max salary, as well as our part-time faculty. They they make the lowest out of any other um thirteen districts in our county. This includes the Antelope Valley, which has a way less cost of living than us. They even pay more for their faculty, even though our cost of living, and the reason I say cost of living is because uh, just recently, the the Council for Community and Economic Research uh came out with their um quarter two, two thousand twenty twenty-three cost of living index, where they ranked LA and Long Beach metro areas as the sixth most expensive area uh city, excuse me, urban city in the entire country. We're living in the sixth most expensive um area um in the entire country. And this is not news to anybody, I don't think, here in this room, if you all gone to the grocery store or anything like that, right? Paying your bills, the gas, all that other things, definitely the rent, right? And so that is, that that is the, that is the the contradiction that we see um as employees and why we're, why we're coming to you to kinda give you an update. Um, you know, we have a really unique role here at Compton Community College. Um, uh, we allow students to get a first-rate education taught by experienced professionals here. Yet the compensation doesn't match that, and why are we at the bottom? I don't understand why we're at the bottom, we shouldn't be at the bottom. And in particular, we're one of only two public community college districts in the entire county that offers an AA in uh for registered nursing. Right? We have this unique, amazing program, yet our nursing faculty survived COVID nineteen, right? That we're on the frontline and yet have not been compensated for that, they're still making their wages from back in two thousand seventeen. They have not had a salary increase because of it. And what does that say to, what does that say to them in terms of an actual, um, you know, an actual cost of living adjustment? That their, that their work and dedication to save the lives of our community members or change uh and transform people's lives for education is not to be, you know, celebrated or is not equal to our colleagues at El Camino or Cerritos or again, one of the other thirteen districts in our county. So um, uh, so ultimately, what we're, what we're, what our, what our position is, is that we're just demanding equity in the workplace. That's our, that's our, that's our key, uh, our keyword that we use. Um, we're asking you as the Board of Trustees to please uh utilize your two responsibilities, which include advocate for and protect the district. Uh, we're members of the district, we're part of the district, as well as assist in establishing a climate in which high standards are maintained and institutional goals are accomplished. I think, um, as my colleague just said before me as well, that being able to pay a cost of living adjustment is um at minimum a way to um to do those, um, to meet those two responsibilities. And we're asking that you please tell the district negotiation team to return to the table. They have taken a step away from the table currently, they're not at the table. Um, engage in good faith bargaining and provide a counterproposal, a counterproposal to our compensation article that we've been waiting for and that we can um, that we can hopefully have a tentative agreement very soon and end in contract negotiations. Our contract is supposed to um be uh until um, June of twenty twenty-five, and we're already about to approach twenty twenty-four. We've already been um negotiating since the fall of twenty twenty-two, since I started here. And we haven't uh had a one tentative agreement. And that is not a, that that is, for us, our perspective is that we have not been treated fairly at the table. We're asking the Board of Trustees to direct the district uh negotiating team to bargain with us in good faith, and in particular, the compensation piece, um, to start off with that. So thank you very much and 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 I'll be seeing you all uh at the next meeting. Uh, thank you all very much for listening.
Thank you, Dr. Mendez, it was nice meeting you. Uh, moving on to agenda item ten point zero four from CCCFE Classified Employees Report from Mr. McKenzie. Mr. McKenzie with us tonight? Okay, if not, we'll move right on to um agenda item number eleven. Um, presentations, um, agenda item eleven point zero one, Compton College Dual Enrollment.
So to. Ready for me to do this now?
Yeah, go ahead, introduce the item, Dr. Curry.
So tonight we have the Dual Enrollment Presentation provided by Dr. Nelly Alvarado, who is the Director of Educational Partnerships.
Thank you, Dr. Curry, good evening, Board of Trustees, members of the public. Uh, my name is Dr. Nelly Alvarado, I am the Director of Educational Partnerships, and the presentation today will be on Dual Enrollment. Uh, this is the five topics that we will cover today. Dual enrollment at Compton College, how it works as a multi-department collaboration. The types of dual enrollment will have an overview of dual enrollment data and an overview of early outreach. For dual enrollment at Compton College, Compton College admits K three twelve students who may have the ability to benefit from concurrently enrolling in college classes while still in high school to minimize the equity gap for access. And I know that it's as high school, but it's really any student K three twelve. Uh, this is a multi-department collaboration. There's collaboration with academic affairs with regards to curriculum, faculty assignments, admissions and records, score grades and registration, counseling and guided pathways for educational planning, progress reports, distance education with technical support to canvas, educational partnerships with, which assists students with applications and onboarding, student support services, early alert follow-up, as well as basic uh, basic needs, including equity grants and tutoring services via our Student Success Center. Now, I'm gonna go over the types of dual enrollment for what I, I want, I have the data as a visual um, just so that you can see, don't, don't linger too much on it. So there's five types of dual enrollment programs, uh, regular K three twelve, afternoon college, Compton Early College High School, AB two eighty-eight, or college and career access pathways, or C cap. And you'll see either AB two eighty-eight C cap together and an instructional service agreement with the California Academy for Math and Science or CAPS. For regular K three twelve, uh, this is open to any student who is not part of an agreement with a unified school district. Students may enroll in any class with the exception of physical-based uh physical education classes, not including esports. And the Office of Educational Partnerships does not facilitate the enrollment for this group of students. Um, all paperwork must be directly submitted to the Office of Admissions and Records. Now, for afternoon college, we have partnerships with six feeder high schools. And this is just so that you have an overall idea of the number of students participating in dual enrollment. Now, the the reason why you'll see differences in the number of students enrolled is because the number of classes offered also varied by school um based off of their school requests. For Compton Early College, uh, students are in this program because they wanna earn an intersegmental general education transfer curriculum or ENGETC um, or their Associate of Arts degree, either in general studies um or another general area. Um, and students enroll in the ninth grade and they progress all the way through their twelfth grade. Compton Early College courses are open to all students, which means that any student from uh the college can go to early college campus and take a class that is offered there. Now, for the visuals, um, I did wanna show that you will see uh in in blue is the number of students per grade level. And what you see in the red is course registrations. Ninth and tenth grade students typically take one class per semester. And as they move through the program, they can take two or more. And that's the reason why you see two hundred and fifty-six course registrations for eleventh graders and three fifty-nine for the twelfth graders. I'm not gonna read all the numbers, I just want you to just look at the visuals as we move through the presentation. Um, for AB two eighty-eight or C cap classes, um, this is a series of courses that can lead to an identified guided pathway. Classes are offered at the high school and they're integrated into the student's regular high school schedule. For AB two eighty-eight classes, tho- these are closed to uh students in the general population. It can only be offered to students that are in the AB two eighty-eight cohort. We have uh partnerships with three districts, Compton, Paramount and Linwood. Compton does not cohort their students, uh, and when I say cohort, that means that they start in the ninth grade and they progress all the way through their twelfth grade of high school, um Paramount and Linwood uh desk. Uh, so for Compton, you'll see the total course registrations for students in their AB two eighty-eight programs. For Linwood Unified, uh, this is specifically for Linwood High School. They will have their first graduating cohort this upcoming spring twenty-two. Fireball started a year later, uh, which means they only have three cohorts, uh, and they'll have their first graduating cohort um next year. And Paramount has the Administration of Justice pathway and their second graduating class will um, will have them in this spring twenty-four. For the California Academy of Mathematics and Science, it's an instructional service agreement. Um, their their graph is displayed by the types of classes, not by grade, because students can take more or one of the areas, so it's, they're just labeled E tech one ten through one eighteen. So we do offer thirteen sections that are also open to any student um that is interested in taking them. And this is an over overview of the total registrations for fall. And that should actually, it's a typo, it's fall twenty-three, it's this current fall. So we have approximately one thousand nine hundred dual enrollment students. But of those students, we have almost two thousand three hundred course registrations. And again, the registrations is because some students do take more than one class to be able to account uh for that. Uh, for the dual enrollment data, um, we have exceeded or met the institutional set goal consistently since twenty nineteen. Uh, what you'll see in this chart is the number of dual enrollment students in proportion to the Compton College general population. So in nineteen twenty, we had about twenty-one percent, almost twenty-two percent of dual enrollment students accounting for the overall student population. And then what you see in twenty 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 twenty-one um is the pandemic, right? And then you start to see the drop in the general student population, but the uh dual enrollment numbers uh increased um in twenty-one, twenty-two. So you're able to see uh that increase in dual enrollment students. And because we were able to uh increase that number, um, dual enrollment currently accounts for approximately a third of all of our uh enrollment for the college. Now, for dual enrollment success and retention, uh, you see the uh data for dual enrollment success and then the uh success data for Compton College students. Our dual enrollment students are doing uh slightly better than our Compton College students. Uh, and with success is that they're successfully passing a course with a C, uh, B or an A or a passing grade. Um, and then for retention, you will also see that students in dual enrollment classes, once they register, they typically tend to stay in the course through the end of the of the course um, and slightly also higher than the Compton student population. Now, this is data for success by gender and ethnicity. Uh, and once again, you can see that the success rate by gender, uh, dual enrollment students are doing slightly better uh than the general college population. Uh, when you break it down by ethnicity, uh, you're also able to see that they're doing slightly better. Um, in the next slide, I, you can also see the retention rates. Uh, once again, dual enrollment students bearing a little bit better than the general student population. And then what I do wanna point out on this slide is the participation by ethnicity. Um, so we have, um, this is in in um, in contrast with the US population. And for the last uh two, three years, we have been able to increase the number of African-American students in dual enrollment programs. So then you see the gap right here on the bottom, uh, is three points in comparison to the eleven points that we see on this, on this end. Um, and then you can also see on this slide, um, the number of uh male students or identifying as black or Latinx is eighty-five percent, which is getting closer to marrying that of um uh, other male students for the general population. Um, now, to support the success and retention of dual enrollment students, uh, the Office of Educational Partners. Well, let me go back. We have three dual enrollment specialists, uh, we're one of the few colleges that actually have individual staff that works with dual enrollment students. They manage early alerts, so if an instructor submits an alert that a student has missed classes, uh, that they're behind on their work or that they need tutoring, the dual enrollment specialists are able uh to reach out to that student to provide resources, whether that be uh tutoring or other academic services, uh, such as scheduling an appointment with a counselor or helping them access um basic needs, basic needs. Um, they do registration checks periodically to ensure that students are still registered in uh courses. And they conduct weekly visits at each of the high schools uh where we offer dual enrollment. Um, and then once again, for early outreach, uh, we have worked with the middle schools in our service area to promote programs that will bring them into the campus. Uh, one of them is the Stamps and Esports Summers Program. And then the second one is, we did uh do a um marketing campaign to parents and guardians this fall to uh promote the twelve and four, which is for students to complete twelve units in four years while they're in high school, uh, to promote spring twenty-four classes. And we are working on recruitment videos in both English and Spanish so that we're able to reach um uh more students. And I'll open it up for questions.
Um, thank you, Dr. Alvarado. Um, trustees, do we have any questions for, um, go ahead, just runs.
Uh, then just on briefly, when did we begin implementing the C cap, C cap?
Uh, let me go, uh, every school district was a little bit different. So for C cap, and I'm gonna go to the slide, uh, for Compton, actually, this is the fourth year with Compton Unified, the fifth year with Compton Unified. Paramount, this is the fifth year for Paramount and for Linwood. It's the fourth year at Lin- Linwood, Linwood High School and the third year with Fireball. And it's just the way that they all, um, once you have the MOU, then you have the other school that also wants to join and that's how it keeps growing.
Thank you.
I think the question was, well, um, I noticed that the student in Compton High still trends lower. Is there any particular reason for how we address these?
Uh, when you say trend lower with the, with the registration, with the number of students? Yeah, and this one is because Compton Unified doesn't start students um as a cohort where they start ninth grade and then they continue for the four years. They open it up to students in the eleventh and twelfth grader, the eleventh and twelfth grade. So they could start um in the eleventh grade, but then decide or choose not to continue with twelfth grade, which changes the number. Overall, they serve more students because they can come in and out versus just staying for four years. And that's the way that they wanted their agreement. versus just staying for four years, and that's the way that they wanted their agreement.
Any questions?
Oh, yes, yes, thank you. What I did for uh Com- Compton Unified uh has one eighty-two eighty-eight program, which is the medical terminology or the three-year program, three-year bachelor's degree program that we have in collaboration with Charles Drew, where students are able to start the program in the eleventh grade, complete two years of dual enrollment classes at Dominguez, complete one year at Compton to transfer out to Charles Drew and do one additional year to do the bachelor's degree in um uh health sciences.
And how many students do we have that data on? How many students are participating in that program?
Uh for the health sciences, we're at twenty-one.
And then our final question was the disaggregated data around ethnicity and again for it's probably eleven percent and then a three percent of the overall, I guess, less than census data, so that's comparative.
Uh but school district data.
The unified, Compton Unified District data, so that's representative of of the total population. So for example, eighty-eight percent of Compton or Pa- Paramount or Limwood represent Latin, Latino, Latina ethnicities, and we have that gray bar which represents our participation. Correct?
Let me go back to the chart just to, and it's going backwards, sorry. The gray chart, it's toward me. Yes, so it depends on which, so this, yeah, there's two. One was for uh in in relation to Compton College students. And then the the last one was in relation to the uh Unified School District demographics.
That's the combined, Paramount, Limwood, Compton.
Yes.
And so for who comprises the remaining percentage is basically what I'm asking. So if that's eighty-four percent, who would group comprise the remaining sixteen percent?
Well, that's a good question. We can get back to you on that one. Oh, Amari here.
So this is data that we we put together for our uh, is it dual enrollment summit, right? The remaining percentage of the students in that group are students who don't identify as black or Latinx. So the conversation for that day was for us to examine, what's the proportion of black and Latinx students overall? And black and Latinx males who are in our school district partners uh versus the students who are participating in dual enrollment. I mean, once I have a conversation with those school district partners about um being more intentional, particularly with our black and Latinx males, I'm making sure that they're aware of the dual enrollment opportunities in Compton.
Great for future question in terms of how we're tracking reticulation. After leaving here, I'm going to Dominguez with that particular program with Charles Drew. Just overall, their success and retention rates at the institution, which they have here if they're four-year or vocational.
So one of the things that we're working on, or Amari's been working on, is our dual enrollment da- our our dashboards. So one of our dashboards, but they're still, they're updating and fine-tuning a little bit to show what our, how those students actually come to Compton College. So as we could see the modified dashboards, that's one of the metrics you wanna have, is where these students are going after completing dual enrollment.
Set off. Okay, I have, um if you could um keep these uh slides up. Um and I think it's uh maybe if you go back one, where you started, yeah, where it has, okay, so here. Um and I think what jumped out to me, like on slide twenty-four, where you where where you were talking about with the African-American males. If you, if you could um break it out like in the graph, so we can see the trends. Right? So where we can see where, you know, um you said now where there's like more students. I think if you break out the different years to identify the trends, that would be helpful as well. Because now that will help us to see where we can, you know, shortcomings or where we need to improve, like where it's working and not working. So I think that was good. And can you repeat again on this slide? Um your comments about um the African-American male students.
Yes, so right here, uh in relation to the Unified School District, uh African-American students represent nine percent of dual enrollment, and they represent twelve percent of the district. So if you do twelve minus three, twelve minus eight, it's three, so we're just lagging three points behind in comparison to Latino students. So it is um the demographics of the district are at eighty-six. But at Compton, those students represent seventy-five percent of dual enrollment, which means that we have a larger gap. It's eleven points uh between the numbers that are represented in the district and participating in dual enrollment.
And and thank you, and I know that this is a all-up dual enrollment um presentation. But also with like seeing where the trends and the gaps are, is now with that to take it a a a a la- a layer further, like to go a little bit deeper, now to tell me like where those students are, right? Are we touching and the students say like in a particular district? Where do we need to like focus? Say if there's a high number of, say, you know, African-American students at one school district, is it working there or is it not working at another, you know, at another school?
So you like to see the data disaggregated by district?
Well, I mean, to like, you know, like to kind of, you know, I'm just saying to kind of, it because I know the um I know that this is, this is very helpful and useful information, but now to have it, you know, now to have it pop and tell us something else, right?
So I wanna make sure I understand this. So we have our dual enrollment dashboards and that information we can disaggregate by ways to the participation. We can also be able to show, get, figure out a way to show what the district's data looks like as based to uh student demographics. Are you asking for, to be able to pull the data uh for the districts?
Yeah.
And see what the gaps are.
From the different campuses, right? Because we have not just, it's not just the old, I mean, I know that this is a dual enrollment presentation, but in the first slide, we have different programs. So what programs are actually working in better in other districts and other campuses, right? That's what I'm talking about.
So so I I was, ye- yes, we can do that based off our dashboards. That's what the staff is working on. I I would just go back to what Dr. Alvarado mentioned regarding to twelve and four, which I think is a groundbreaking initiative, which which I announced at the Dual Enrollment Conference last spring, is that now we're reaching out to all students regardless of dual enrollment opportunities. And those students are able to be a participant in workshop, at least to do the wrongest, they can know about the opportunity. I think that's how we have a close to gap, because it's been so centralized where certain students are invited to participate.
Yeah.
If we wanna make sure that everyone's aware about the dual enrollment opportunities. Uh we also at the same time be careful as well regards to dual enrollment and ensuring that students are successful in their dual enrollment classes, because it could affect their financial aid in the future. And so we wanna pretty to offer dual enrollment, but at the same time, we wanna be mindful, they wanna make sure we have the right students into the enrollment, just so that those students are successful, and it doesn't um, it's not a problem in the future regardless of financial aid, they don't do well in the classes.
And um also just one other thing, like on slide number eighteen, and this is for the doctor. Um so on number eighteen, the CAMHS, is that L V U S D?
Yes.
Okay. Can uh and uh I know that this is for fall, so next time, like next year this time, will um like P U S D's CAMHS program or their dual enrollment come on? On four, when is that gonna?
Yeah, they're not right.
But that is for, I thought they were not coming on until.
So about the signature.
Odyssey. Is that, is that twenty-four, twenty-five school year? That's what I remember.
We have afternoon college classes right now at Buena Vista High School.
Yeah.
That, and the Odyssey students and Buena Vista High School students do that in afternoon college.
Yeah, it was.
So they are recorded in the L V, in that P U S D number?
Yes.
It's recorded in the afternoon college slide.
Okay.
But I think it was the very first one, right here.
That's where we college.
One more, right here.
Paramount, but it's 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 Buena Vista, Paramount doesn't.
Is is Buena Vista?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's Buena Vista Odyssey students together.
Okay, thank you. That is, oh, I'm sorry.
And Justin, let me, one quick follow-up, um when you were referencing again gray bar. Um and uh, yeah, there were Latino students collectively across the various school districts in their current participation in dual enrollment. What's the raw data? Because I'm thinking comparative, from a comparative analysis for the black students. For example, it's three percent of their representation. What is the actual, what are the actual?
The actual numbers?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know. But I'll make a note of it.
Do you think it's a, I I think the data point for both is that we're not yet reflecting the full representation, but I think comparing the two could be I don't think it's a necessity to compare the two gaps, like one is three and one is eleven, because I think the numbers are so different that that we can continue to frame it as we're not even on increasing the representation of how they reflect across our districts, and then maybe disaggregate those districts like seventy-five percent. You know, at Compton Unified and eighty-seven percent, yeah, I might be defined to come up with that average. And then that way you can know where we're falling, uh sure.
I made another bit, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is that all? Uh no further question. Thank you, um Dr. Alvarado for your presentation. Next, we'll move on to um Agenda Item eleven point zero two, Compton College um Corp Program. Doctor Currie, will you introduce this item, please?
Uh yeah, uh Dana Smith, who is our program uh manager for the college program, providing updated on college.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Um I'm here to speak about College Core. Um I'm pretty much gonna talk about the program from start to finish, talk about our priorities, um discuss the program goals and how it benefits our students as well as our campus. I'm gonna discuss last year as well as this year and talk about the new grant timeline for the next two years. Okay, so in College Core, we start by um advertising to the students uh that they can earn ten thousand dollars for volunteering in their community. And they uh initially show their interest by submitting an application. Um from there, we enroll students with a short interview, background check, and approval with Academic Affairs. Um we match those students after they're approved with uh local organizations that have a need for students in K through twelve education, digital navigation, as well as food insecurity, which is working with like different food banks and food drives. Um completing this program is uh finishing three hundred hours of service, and that will earn the student's a certificate. And any student that uh completes an additional one hundred and fifty hours of service will earn an additional three thousand dollars um in the form of the educational award. Um and after this, we anticipate that the fellows um will transition to a four-year university or enter the workforce of debt-free or close to debt-free and with experience. Uh the priorities for our program is recruitment. We plan to recruit at least eighty fellows next year. Um and our engagement in the community is a priority, which is for us to engage with community host partners and see exactly what the need is in the community and match the fellows with that need, as well as retaining the fellows that we have um and ensuring that they all complete the program. The goals that we have are to monitor the results of the College Core program um in the enrollment and improving every year. Uh we also have goals of monitoring the progress of the fellows that are already enrolled to ensure that they can uh complete a minimum number of hours each week in the community to ensure that they're on the right path to finish the program. We also support the development of new career and educational programs, seeing exactly what the students are interested in, so that we can make sure we fulfill that need. Um and our last goal is to work closely with the fellows to ensure that they all complete the program. The benefit of College Core to the California volunteers and our students is to earn a living allowance. Um seven thousand dollars is divided over the course of the entire school year over about twenty-one or twenty-two payments, and the students are paid bi-weekly um around three hundred, over three hundred dollars. And at the end of the school year, if they are to finish, they receive an additional three thousand dollars, and that's how they have the total of ten thousand. Students also gain useful work experience. They are able to network with other students at different campuses. And they also get to experience student life um at a university campus. The benefits for Compton College is that this grant does allot fifteen thousand dollars per fellow, where the maximum amount allocated to the student should never exceed ten thousand dollars. Um we can aid in recruitment to the school by being a part of the Southern California Consortium and um also having this program on websites at different campuses, as well as the State of California's website for College Core, letting people know that the program is also offered here. We also aid in preparing students for a four-year university and also to enter the workforce debt-free or close to debt-free. Um and we also, which is most important, provide an additional and beneficial safe space for undocumented and A B five forty students. Um the requirements for being in the program or the requirements to continuously get the award from the program is to maintain a two-point-O GPA, be enrolled full-time, and to reach three hundred hours to obtain the certificate or to go further and reach four hundred and fifty hours and attain that three thousand dollar education award. The data from last year, um in Cohort One, we had a hundred and sixty applicants. From that a hundred and sixty, we enrolled a hundred and two students. Sixty-two of those students worked in the community and recorded hours. Sixteen of those students recorded over a hundred hours in the community. Two of the students in the cohort completed with over three hundred hours to receive the certificate, while eleven additional students went on to complete four hundred and fifty hours earning that education award. Cohort Two, which is this year, we've had a hundred and forty-seven applicants. From that a hundred and forty-seven, we've enrolled fifty-one fellows, and thirty-three are currently in the program and completing hours. And as of now, we have around twelve fellows who have exceeded one hundred hours so far. Um the rest of our data will be available uh July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. The new grant for years twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six um is due December twelfth, um five P M. We have a notice that we intend to apply. That was due on November seventeenth. That was already completed by myself. And uh after that application is completed, um decisions will be given um on January twenty-sixth to twenty twenty-four. Are there any question?
Um thank you for that presentation, this Dana Smith. Trustee, do we, yes, go ahead, student trustee.
You said bi-weekly they get paid?
Yes.
So what is the process when the students are not getting paid on time? Like, how long between that timeframe? Cause I have heard of students not getting paid on time, like what is that process? Do they have to wait until they get that payment?
Um I would say it never should exceed two weeks, because that's when the next payment should be rolling around. Um but currently, we did have late payments and they never went past one or two days. So most of the students, when they do talk about late payments, um it's simply the system. I've seen a system, um a payment in the system, it's um on November fifteenth, that just showed up this morning. So sometimes it's just a miscommunication or a delay in the system, but if it was human error, it shouldn't be more than two weeks.
Somewhere in two weeks. So then we pay in a month time, the side of the tubes.
I'm sorry?
Did you say it shouldn't be more than two weeks?
Correct, because that's when the next payment would hit.
Okay.
So we've been, we would uh instruct the financial aid office to submit two payments, and that's if we missed it.
Justies, any other further questions? Um trustee uh.
And one of the slides, and I can't remember what number it was, you talked about type of assignments given to students. Are they on campus or the off-campus type of assignments?
Both. So our on-campus positions would be um like working at the farmer's market on Wednesdays. We also have a tartar food pantry here. Um our students also work the mobile food pantry, that's once a month on campus. And our CalFresh office, we have two students that work there.
Justin.
I have a question in regard to a couple of things. One, do you guys um have you looked into any partnerships possibly with AmeriCorps? Um with the national uh.
Um, which is the national, uh, service entity by the newest. And then in terms of the governor's investment in apprenticeships, uh, are there certain. Categories of, of professional development that we are having students participate in that may lead to permanent. Uh, vocational apprenticeship or any other form of apprenticeship?
Um, we're definitely discussing that. We just had a swearing-in ceremony at UCLA where we did have some individuals speak with our students. About what they would be interested in, but other than that, we hold our own, uh, monthly leadership workshops. To, you know, develop the students and match that learning with what they're doing at the organization.
So is, is the bulk of the focus service learning or is it experiential learning? In a professional and educational manner? Because two different things.
I would say the bulk of it is the latter. Which is definitely experience. We're wanting to get the fellows' work experience while graduating debt-free. Building up their resumes and having a start before, you know, entering into the workforce.
Oh.
Um, any other questions? Okay, thank you so very much. Um, moving on to, um, Agenda Item number twelve, which is a consent. Um, do I have a motion to approve the consented agenda items? Little, that's, uh, uh, Ramos, trustee Ramos. And, um, trustee, do we have any, any discussions? No discussions? Is there any items that you, um, that you would like to see?
No, like a poll?
No, okay. None? Okay, we have a motion and a second. No discussions? That's a unanimous yes vote. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item number thirteen. Ooh, this is a lot. Action items. Um, Agenda Item thirteen point zero one, Administrative Services Resolution Number eleven dash twenty-one dash twenty twenty-three B. Authorizing the insurance of Compton Community College District General Obligation Bond. Election of twenty fourteen, series twenty twenty-four B, and actions related there too. Can I get a motion?
So.
Uh, trustee Little motion, second by Ramos. Do we have any discussion, trustees? No discussions? Okay, Sylvia, we can have the vote, please. Yeah. Ramos's second. That's a unanimous yes vote. Okay, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item thirteen point zero two. Administrative Services Resolution Number eleven dash twenty-one dash twenty twenty-three C. Resolution reserving a portion of the college's potential employment retention tax credit to support basic student needs services. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Okay. Dr. Curry, return and say something.
Uh, I would take the discussion.
Okay, do we have any? Yeah, I got it. Um, uh, Dr. Curry.
This is an opportunity for us to be able to utilize what's our tax returns that we return. We'll utilize the funds, a portion of those funds to support basic needs, which is important to us as look at our enrollment growth. We see students are taking advantage of our food resources, uh, and also our employees are taking advantage of our food, food resources as well. Um, this is, uh, I highly recommend this to the board of food society.
Thank you. Any further discussions? If not, uh, Sylvia, if we can get a vote, come vote, please. We can get a vote. That's a unanimous yes vote. Okay, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item thirteen point zero three, Administrative Services. Compton Community College District Resolution Number eleven dash twenty-one dash twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three D. Budget transfer argumentation for fiscal year twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four. Can I get a motion, please?
So.
Ramos, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, do we have any discussion? Dr. Curry, you want to add anything? Okay, if there's no discussions, um, Sylvia. That's a unanimous yes vote. Okay, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item number fourteen. Action and discussions. Dr. Curry, I'll turn this over to you.
So, okay, the first item that we have an action discussion is a, a draft of the board presentation and report schedule for twenty twenty-four. Um, just want to know if this is, uh, of interest to the board trustees in regards to, uh.
Do you want me to vote?
Yeah, please, sorry. Regarding the potential presentations for next year, we try to make sure that the required items, including the audits. Are included in the board agenda and also the, the financial audit and also the bond audit. We also want to make sure we provide some presentations in certain areas that we know that from the previous conversations. That the board of trustees would like to hear. Is there any else that you would like to see us add? To the board presentation schedule as we try to finalize it next month, before next month, more of me.
Yes, go ahead, um, trustee, um.
Is the foundation under the Oliver Connor update as well? There's a promise program? Is that the same or?
That's, it's different. But we have, each month we provide a report on the foundation in the, um. Uh, information section. If the board would like a presentation, a foundation presentation, we can add that to the agenda as well.
Uh, can we do that as a overall one? Just because I feel like that was a trending topic.
Got it.
Which one? You had it?
The foundation.
As a presentation.
As a presentation. I know he says it's a stemming item, but I feel like those were still some unanswered questions in the last couple of months.
Okay, anything else? Anyone else? Anything to add? Uh, I would, um, Dr. Curry, we, in February, when you say, um. The presentation, uh, financial aid, is that just a report? Is that like a budget update or?
That's, that's a presentation about our fundraising program and what we're doing with that fundraising department. So be it the numbers to the square warning, what types of award they receive, uh, also talks about scholarships as well.
And when I talk about the activity on the, um, on the. Will this presentation include the, um, the workshops scheduled or the, you know, the activity? Would that be?
Are you talking about, are you talking about the Catholic college events? You're talking about all the events as well?
All the events.
So you like that? You would like to see a slide or something in regards to the events and participation?
Yes, because at that time, I mean, I know that the timeline is going to be, you know, short with, um. With the release of the new FASB for December. So could there, um, if it's not enough time, then maybe that can be a second one?
No, we, we want to report the budget director now that this is only asked of them to make sure that that's included with slides.
Okay, but the, but does that give them enough time? Because it's slated for February.
Regardless, I think it's important that we continue to show what act, what activities we're doing in January and February and what we're doing for the entire year. So that means we can have some numbers about how many people are participating in the workshops for December, for the year. And then also showing what the projected workshops are through the spring.
Okay.
And so we can add that to a part of presentation.
Okay, if you can have it, that's all I have. Does anybody else have anything else that they would like to add? Any additional presentations or any additional items that you would like to see in any of the presentations? Okay, if we have none, um, Sylvia, if we, I think we gotta, oh, this is a, a discussion, I'm sorry, let me close it. So moving on, right? So we can skip all that?
Yeah, so item fourteen.
Yeah, please.
Item fourteen point zero two, uh, at the next month's board meeting, when the board will be, uh, do the organizational meeting. Uh, deciding regardless of board meeting dates. So every year we bring forth to you the, um. The, the board of trustee, the meeting for the K-12 districts and also the, the, uh, the cities. Regards to their meetings and also proposed dates of what the meetings might look like for twenty twenty-four. So we provide Monday, Tuesday, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, and we also provide the holidays that are scheduled for Monday.
And we, and, and this will be action next month?
It'll be action for the board trustees to review and make a decision on what days you would like to have the board.
But does it sound the? Next meeting, right?
Yes. But we'll give the opportunity to look at it. Now, if you have any questions or any other follow-up information you might need, to let us know.
Okay. Um, Agenda Item fourteen point zero three?
Fourteen point zero three, uh, as last month we provided the legislative report cards for the trustee areas. And our institution effective office has all of our supervisory, our assembly, and also our congressional, uh, report cards completed. And this will be included in our, uh, advocacy, our legislative advocacy handbook. Uh, that will be released in, hopefully, that we have a good draft next month, but January it'd be finalized, it'd be finalized before. We have meetings in Sacramento and also in Washington, D.C. But these are the report cards that will be shared with our officials. And so I will say thank you to our institution effective office for working on. And you have received yours as well. I provided a email to the board with yours, uh, with the link to your, uh, report cards, uh, last month.
Okay. Um. Uh. Agenda Item fourteen point zero four?
Fourteen point zero four is the, you have a board retreat scheduled for December eleventh from five to eight o'clock P M. Uh, I wanted to bring forth some of the agenda items that we know of. If there's anything you want to add. But one is working with, uh, Dr. Benjamin on the review of your outcomes of the board of trustees retreat, the last one. And then also your twenty-three, twenty-four work goals and progress choices. Is there any else that you would like to discuss at the board retreat?
You want trustees? Anybody? Yes, I would like to discuss. I would like to go back and revisit, um, subcommittees. Subcommittee and I, um, uh, subcommittees that relate and tie into, uh, our goals. To have some direction, not just any old, but to have subcommittees that kind of tie into, um. Our success. All that kind of stuff. I'll get back to you in a moment. Is that okay? All right. Um, moving on to Agenda Item fourteen point zero five.
Fourteen point zero five is an updated enrollment. Uh, Sherry Burger, since you're there, you can talk about it.
Great, thank you. Um, so our, our enrollment is, uh, for winter is up. Um, look at the enrollment snapshot, which has a comparison, um, to not just last year, but two years ago. And then there's some charts that go back to, um, winter of twenty twenty. So as of last Thursday, we are up thirty-two percent in enrollment. Our seats filled. Our, uh, fill rate is at eleven percent. Um, uh, excuse me, is it fifty percent up eleven percent from last year? And our FTS is at a hundred and eighty, up twenty-nine percent. Um, you can see that we're up even more compared to two years ago, which would be winter of twenty twenty-two. Um, looking at the head count compared to last year, our head count is up. Two hundred sixty-eight students are twenty-nine percent compared to winter of twenty-three. And up four hundred seventy-six students compared to winter of twenty-two. So we're up sixty-eight percent. If you look at the pages three, four, and five of this, um, PDF. Um, that's a little bit. But it's not all fitting. Um, the bars here, the red bars are the, um, winter twenty twenty-four are current. The. Uh. Green is winter twenty-three, purple is winter twenty-two. This teal is winter twenty-one and orange is winter twenty. We're on track right now to, eh, to exceed, um, winter twenty-three, twenty-two, and twenty-one, the last three years. Um, winter twenty was pre-pandemic. Um, and that's our goal is, uh, ultimately, um, to, to, uh, reach where we were before the pandemic. So this is our total enrollment. The seats filled. Similarly, our FTS for winter twenty-four is up, up compared to the last three years. Um, and compared to winter twenty twenty, we didn't start tracking this information as early as we do now. That's why there is a gap where that orange line starts, um, because it has to do with when we started tracking the data. Um, and then lastly, the head count is also up compared to the last three years. Uh, we've also been starting our registration for our terms earlier. So we're seeing more students come so that we're not encouraging the wait till last minute enrollment. And we're trying to capture them and be more competitive with our surrounding colleges when they open up their registrations.
Um, let me ask a question.
Yes.
Oh, sure. Um, is it possible, um, and I don't know if this is like a double count. But, um, the shorter terms. Like when we have like this new, you know, I forget what it's called, um, the shorter terms, like the, um, the four weeks. Is there a way to, you know, maybe include that? Uh, maybe like on a separate slide to kind of see if there is a jump. You know, and like maybe say more students taking like that short, um, you know, in between the semesters. Or with, like, how do you count those students in between semesters?
Sorry, are you asking about the winters count? So we have the data for the winter, which is here right now, which is the four to five week term. We also provide the summer term as well. Are you asking for the eight-week session where we have the fall eight-week beginning and the fall, the second eight-week session? Are you asking for that? Or are you asking for the intercessions?
So what will be the intercessions, like the four weeks?
About the winter session or, or even the summer.
Are those the eight or the four, or the eight?
Winter, winter's a five-week session. We don't have a four-week session. Winter's a five-week session. Summer is two six-week overlapping sessions or one that goes eight weeks, um, for the sun, for the high unit, high hour classes like our science class.
What item has the, um, is it the next one that has the calendar on it? Because it, it identifies it in the calendar.
Yeah, but it identifies those sessions in the calendar, so.
Okay, so those short sessions, where are those on here?
That's, that's the winner. That's the winner.
Winter twenty-three, the fourteen seventy?
So win, so winter twenty-four, this is the head count. Winter twenty-four, we have one thousand one hundred forty-nine.
Yeah.
Students, unique students compared to winter twenty-three, we had one thousand forty. At this point in time, not relative to where we are now. Um. So the purple line is winter twenty-three. And you can see that the orange bar is higher than the purple line. So our head count is up compared to last winter. Compared to two winters ago, that is this, I don't know, the brownish color line. That is winter twenty-two. Compared to winter twenty-one is this blue line. And you can see that we had started two weeks earlier than we did in winter of twenty-two. Our registration process. So that's why they were at zero. And winter twenty is this other darker blue line in head count. And we don't have data to compare because we didn't start tracking it until. Right around Thanksgiving.
Okay.
But all three slides, so that's the head count. The previous slide was our full-time equivalent students. And again, this is all winter. It's comparing winters to each other. And then we have the seats filled or our enrollment. How many registrations we have?
Got it. Anything else? Any, uh, any other questions on this agenda?
Okay. I also, um, one last thing, I'm sorry. Um, that's the FTS, which I know everybody likes the numbers. But I don't want to forget all of the work that we're doing behind getting those numbers. So we have in, um, the item, our virtual steps to enrollment. Our in-person enrollment services and our outreach activities for the month of October. Um, including dual enrollment, high school outreach, community events, et cetera. We also have our call center campaigns, um, where we've been making calls to students who withdrew from classes. To, you know, encourage them to come back, calling students who don't have an ed plan, encouraging them to get an ed plan. And also, uh, sending them emails. Um, and then our welcome center, um, the help that they've been receiving in the welcome center. So all of those things are the services in trying to bring the students in and keep the students in, um, with all of those different touchpoints.
If I may make a comment? So and, um, I know you mentioned the calls. But I also think, because we've said it, you know, with this new group, the texting as well. So if, is that included when you say the calls? So you have the calls, the text, you know, all those touch points, because that's very important as well to capture that data.
And so we're utilizing what through CRM recruit, CRM advice, the texting component to be able to text to us as well. So we're not only texting about drop to legal counsel, we're also texting about events as well. Um, it's, you know, at the end of the day, it's multiple wa- ways to communicate with students. You also have a faculty hub, we're doing analysis for students as well, what's going on on campus. So we're doing them multiple ways to, to, to touch students in different touch points.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure that, that, that all of that activity, you know, is being, you know, captured as well.
And lastly is the marketing that we do through our community relations with postcards and all of the other um, activities.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. What item? Um, moving on fourteen, agenda item fourteen point zero six. Okay, Mary.
Yes, I've asked Dr. Gash to talk about the five-year budget that we've been working on, uh, Dr. Gash.
Uh, good evening, board of trustees, colleagues. So I present to you the five-year budget, the first page here, and then it's basically our assumptions. And uh, we take this information based on various sources. Uh, we also look at the legislature, and I want to point out to you the funded COLA. Like you go here on this row here, our time highlighting.
Thank you, highlight it mine.
There you go. I did?
Yeah.
There you go. So you know that, for the current year, the COLA is eight point two-two. Uh, we rely on School Services of California to do some predictions. In terms of the COLA for the future years, three point nine-four, but fiscally twenty-five, fiscally twenty-six, three point two-nine. I'm gonna stop there for a minute. If you remember, our whole harmless goes on through twenty-five, twenty-six. And so that's where we stop uh, at that, uh, at that number. And what happens is in the future years past that fiscally twenty-six, we no longer get COLA. Our funding is based on that twenty-five, twenty-six number. And that's why you see zero percent increase uh, for those last two years uh, in this presentation. Uh, the other thing I wanted to highlight to you is that line of credit. You had agreed that we, by FY twenty-six, will be fully paid. And so you see that line of credit is fully paid uh, there. And so we take these, these numbers and then we generate uh, the revenue page. So this is, this is revenue based on the uh, those assumptions. Uh, and, and, and you will see in a minute that, you know, our revenues stay flat when it comes to the future years, uh, twenty-six, twenty-seven. Man, let me see, I haven't enlarged this, it's kind of hard to see. And so again, we take those uh, assumptions and we calculate the expenditures uh, for each one of the five years. Uh, now let me come to the bottom line, probably easier here. Um, so this is the summary of the five years, uh, let me just do a little bit of a uh, so as you know that we are, we are funded at fifty-nine, eighty, that's our whole harmless number. But you can see FY twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, our revenues remain uh, fairly uh, uh, the same. Um, our expenses, of course, are reflected here, they go up based on those percentage increases and our reserves are shown up here in the bottom, um, numbers in the bottom row. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Nasser, for the presentation. Trustees, do we have any questions for Dr. Nasser? Okay, thank you.
I like the comment, I think it's important for the board to know, go back to, to, to Dr. So if you look at some of our, our deficit spending, we have been putting money aside and for different areas, not only increasing our OPEP payments. And that's our, our, our line of credit payment, but also we've been set aside funding for facility projects as well. As the costs of these projects are rising due to inflation, so we set aside. But our goal is by twenty-five, twenty-six, we're no longer deficit spending for the district. And so we've been really monitoring this. Also, the five-year budget includes staffing positions that were funded through um, per dollars and also through COVID-nineteen block grant dollars and also through enrollment management dollars. We've been able to strategically uh, fund those positions within the district budget as well. You also included uh, new faculty positions, one new faculty position each year. And we don't know if we're going to fill those positions, but we want to do that based off of new programs that are recommended by the academic senate. To give us some options to be able to hire faculty in those areas. Uh, or it could be through replacement of faculty in certain areas, uh, depending on if different retired, if retirements occur as well. So we, but we only put one position, uh, that's new position in the budget. That doesn't mean if the state comes in, as they have done in the past, providing funding for new faculty positions, that, that's not included. And so we'll be monitoring that from the state as we move forward. So the five-year budget is, is, it is where we're at right now. It's a fluid document. Uh, I would tell you, I, I look at this uh, at least twice a week, because I'm always concerned about future positions and making sure that positions are funded as we move forward. One of my concerns regarding the five-year budget is some of the categorical programs. Uh, for example, student equity achievement, which is one of our programs, that we have several individuals on that program. And the state has provided additional money in COLA for that. But we, we, we see that that program could be the deficit spending in the future due to salary increases that have occurred. So we continue to monitor that because the district might pick up some of the cost that for that area in the future. But we're really monitoring uh, the under-student dollars in the five-year. And we're going to be submitting the five-year budget to the chancellor's office uh, by December first, which is our, our, our scheduled deadline. To give them an update of where we're at regards to uh, regards to the district. Okay, where we are as a district, that will move forward.
Thank you, thank you, De- I'm Debra Curry for those additional comments. Um, again, do we have any other questions for Dr. Nasser? Thank you again, Dr. Nasser, for um, your overview tonight on that. Um, moving uh, right along, uh, item number fifteen, grant items, we have none. Moving on to uh, agenda item number sixteen, Dr. Curry, I'll turn it over to you.
So these are the uh, policy procedures that we've worked on. Uh, one, one note, uh, trustee Cameron had, had a question regards to the uh, board policy thirty-four twenty and also for a mission regulation thirty-four twenty regards to equal employment, regards to um, the, the box, if someone was a um, formerly incarcerated convicted of a felony, is there a check box for that? We no longer have it as a response to trustee Calhoun, that's no longer a part of our application. And then we also have a process as relates to uh, once we get um, background checks, uh, what does that look like? And I have an email communication with trustee Calhoun regards to that question, but she did ask that prior to the meeting. Also, item number sixteen point one zero uh, provides update, uh, as we've been working on this policy regards to uh, AR thirty-three twenty, which we will issue and also provide this to the Hall of Fame family uh, tomorrow. But this is a revision to the policy regarding the naming and naming of the facility inside of a building, and this clears up the, this clears up the policy as relates to that. And they will have to go through the process to request the name be changed from Hall of Fame Library to Emily B. Hart Hall of Fame Library.
Thank you.
That concludes the uh, board policies and mission regulations.
Okay, thank you. Um, trustees, again, do we have any questions on any of the board policies on number sixteen? If not, we will move on to agenda item number seventeen, which is information items. Um, seventeen point zero one.
So, uh, this month we have several board agenda items, uh, regarding, that's in the information section. As board knows, this is a way for us to continue to document what's happening. I think what's important for us to look at is, I would, item seventeen point two-one, regards to the audit finding from uh, the past year, uh, regards to the audit files regulations. And then also the uh, recommendations from the auditors regarding the uh, financial aid uh, recommendation. And there, and there's going to be some, we have to have some conversations with the academic senate regards to uh, the policy, regards to uh, change of grades, um, and that whole policy, and that whole process. And so we're going to have a conversation with the academic senate on Monday regards to that. And, but I do agree with the academic senate on their question, because, you know, are we being held to a certain standard different than other community colleges? And so we'll be following back up uh, with the auditing firm and also with the consultant that helped us with this policy. Because I don't want to have um, something that's different than other colleges if they're not held to the same uh, standard. And so we'll be looking into that, but we're also going to be looking at what other colleges throughout all the seventeen districts are going as ways to that. And then also reaching back and having a conversation with the auditing firm as well. Uh, also, I wanted to highlight I want to highlight out of seventeen point two-five, we have several task forces and work groups that are working on various issues and concerns on campus. And I think this is a good thing, because we have a small group of individuals who are working to identify uh, situations and to fix them. And so we continue to uh, work through some of the things that we want to work on at this campus to move things forward. Out of seventeen point two-six is the um, legislative update. We provided the chaptered uh, legislation and guidance report. Uh, next month, we, we update this for you. One of the things that we have done uh, through the work of, ahead of product is we have been able to identify all the new legislation and what individual is responsible for implementing those recommendations. And so that's important. I was in a conversation with some CEOs, community college CEOs last week, regards to um, regards to uh, legislation and how we follow back up. I think it's very important that we at colleges have a point of contact for each legisla- legislation. But also sometimes you have to have different work groups, so people can be able to talk through some of the implications as relates to it.
Is that all?
That's all. But I do want, can I go back to item seven, sixteen point one-eight, I forgot to say something? On employee travel? Just, we've been working on employee travel policy, uh, and one of the recommendations from trustee Calhoun regards to, we have it in the, in the mission regulation, we totally revamped the policy. Uh, I think it's, it's very, it's a lot better than what it was. We really addressed the per diem and the per diem rate. But one thing that trustee Calhoun asked about was we, we put a, a timeline of fourteen days uh, before travel to get authorization. And one of her recommendations was to make it thirty days instead of fourteen days.
Thirty days before the event?
Yes.
Or thirty days before the last day of registration?
It is thirty days before the event. Before the travel. My concern is that, uh, I just want to make sure that we're able to meet the deadlines prior to the, there's sometimes there's going to be uh, exceptions to the policy regards to, it could be a last minute meeting that needs to take place in like a second. That I do understand. But my concern is that if we people are registered late for conferences, that's additional charge to the district. And so it could be the fourteen days or prior to the registration deadline. And I think that could clean it up as well. But I'm also okay with the thirty days. I just know what the board, how the board feels about this, this sort of regulation.
So will this come up as actions next time or?
No, it's actually a mission regulation which is issued by the CEO. And so I can make the modifications.
Any discussion, we need to discuss it or?
Just want to know the feedback.
And as is being fourteen days?
Thirty.
Thirty days? I'll see wrong ones. Thirty days? Okay. Um, I'm with thirty days as well.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Um, I have a, I'm going, is, is that all, um, a quick review on uh, agenda item number sixteen, no other?
I'm up to sixteen.
I know, but he went up to the board, isn't the travel policy in sixteen?
It's sixteen, yeah.
Yeah, so no additional comments on item number sixteen, right?
Nope.
Okay, so going back to seventeen?
Seventeen, I just want to just close out seventeen is the, the board of trustees follow-up law. Uh, we're getting closer and closer to catch up regards to our follow-up items. And so we, we're documenting a little bit differently regards to when they're completed and how they're completed, was it email or was it included in the board agenda? So we're coming close to finishing most of the board items. And so we just want to continue, we're documenting all the followed items for the board.
Okay, that it?
Yep.
Okay, any uh, comments on any uh, items in in agenda item number seventeen? Okay, I do. Um, seventeen point zero eight, the foundation, is this one of the um, one of the annual boards or assignments that we vote on?
Yeah.
It is?
Yeah, and so.
Come back up in some.
This is during the
Next month?
During organizational meeting, trustee Calhoun asked a question as well.
Okay.
That comes up in an organizational meeting, and that's going to place on agenda for the board appointment.
So next month?
Yes.
Okay, got it. Okay. All right, that's all I have. No other comments or discussions on anything seventeen? Moving on to future agenda items. Um, do we have, trustees, do we have um, any requests for future agenda items? Saying none, okay, we'll move on to um, eighteen point one, future agenda items, eighteen point oh-two, annual organization meeting, we already talked about that, right? What's going to be used? I can hear.
At the September twelve.
The September twelve meeting. Okay. Um, eighteen point oh-three?
So eighty point, so the next board meeting, you have the annual organizational meeting, which includes the uh, voting on the officers, the foundation representation, and also different county committees. Then you also have the board trustee meeting dates. And you have to allow a presentation on veteran services, a report of doing enrollment, and also a report of student learning outcomes. And then also report on the call to action and what's been done in that area.
Um, trustees, any discussions on any of the items in, in item number eighteen? Okay, moving on to um, item number nineteen, or reports, Dr. Curry?
Yeah, uh, I just want to say, uh, one first, uh, happy holidays, uh, happy Thanksgiving to uh, all the Compton College faculty, staff, and the board of trustees, classified professors, and the board of trustees. I want to say thank you to this, to the, uh, to everyone that was involved with the planning of the Taste of Thanksgiving event that was held on November the fourteenth. I thought it was a really, really well-done, organized event, and I'm really appreciative to this, to, to everyone that was involved in that planning. Also, I want to say thank you to everyone that was involved in the turkey giveaway for students and also the turkey giveaway for employees that happened on Wednesday, November the fifteenth. Uh, for my understanding, that was a well, well-organized event, but a lot of students were in line for turkeys. We have to figure out a way to organize that where students are not being aligned to be able to pick up a turkey. So we're figuring it out for next year as we move forward. Uh, on December sixth, uh, at twelve o'clock, we have a holiday celebration in the multipurpose rooms. So we're all looking forward to that event as we move forward. Uh, we're getting close to the end of the semester, uh, it happened very quickly. Um, and then we have the winter break, and then we start spring in, in the, in February. So there's a lot that's happening here at Compton College, and we do a lot in support of our students. Uh, and also I'd say, thank, thank you to the board of trustees uh, for their significant items, the thirty-five million dollars worth of bond. Uh, we have to sell bond funds to support our facilities projects. As you know, we have our um, it's a physical education project right now out to bid, and we need to make sure that we have the cash to support that, for that project. And that will start construction sometime in the spring. We also anticipate starting construction sometime in the spring on student housing. So there's a lot that is going on right now.
Does that conclude your report?
That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Murray, nineteen point zero two, student trustee Collins.
Hey guys, I don't have a oral report for today, but happy holidays, I hope you guys enjoyed your time.
Thank you, thank you for your report. Uh, nineteen point zero three, trustee Lopez.
Um, again, happy Veterans Day to both of our four trustees who have served, trustee Ramos and trustee Doppelmore. Um, thank you to everybody I believe you could see at the conference, congratulations on the level of presentation, Dr. Curry. And uh, trustee Calhoun who were on the panel. And have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Um, trustee Ramos?
Just have a happy Thanksgiving in our report.
Okay, thank you. Um, I had the uh, I had the opportunity of attending um, the College of Affordability Summit, which was put on by um, the Riverside County of Education. Um, in Riverside, California. And it was, um, it was, it was nice, it was touching, it was heartwarming. And it was um, it was, it was nice, it was touching, it was heartwarming. Um, to be in one of the sessions where um everyone that attended, they were talking about the Compton Effect. So, Dr. Curry, can you share with those that don't know, um, a little bit like what is the Compton Effect?
I don't know the Compton.
The Compton Effect?
I wasn't there.
Okay, so the Compton Effect is like what we're doing here at Compton College on uh basic needs for students.
I I I think the uh Amari Williams, our dean, our dean of issues of veterans, was at the conference as well. And he presented on our CalFresh data sharing unit. Uh, which which shows that significant number of students who complete the waiver, are actually uh. Sign up for CalFresh. So that's one of the, but also I think the the farmers market and the food resource that we've provided to students. Uh, is has been making a significant um. Interrolls on our campus, but also within the higher community, the higher education community. These people are are watching to see how we're able to do what we're doing to support the students. Uh, I think as we look at the 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 Compton effect, or as I would call it, the Burgundy Print. Is that we're focused in on student-based needs. Where we're able, we're able to address the student-based needs, and student housing is another piece of that. Uh, of that Burgundy Print on the Compton, or the Compton Effect. So I I think, but it all goes back to the to the faculty staff, who've been doing this work over the years. And we have made a significant financial investment due to the uh American Rescue Plan dollars. To really uh think outside the box in support of student success. And so uh we'll continue to do that, we continue to look at other opportunities. Uh, one of the concerns that we we try to figure out is um temporary housing. And what that might look like for students, because we we're like, we see that more students are coming, we need a place to sleep that one night. And what does that look like uh for our student population? And how can we do something short-term? With confidence.
That's what they were following it, they were following it, the Compton Effect. Um, also, I would just like to say, I know, um, I'm always the voice and I'm always talking about financially, but it's very, very, very important. And it's something, you know, it goes hand in hand with um with our student needs. And I happen to be here on campus. Um, that day when we had the turkey giveaway, I think it was like on Wednesday, we had. Our farmer's market and everything was going on, and it was a little drizzling. But then when it got time for the farmer's market to open up. It was raining really hard. I'm gonna tell you, me, myself, you guys know me, I love every table, I'm over there and I'll get my uh. My blueberries and my raspberries, you know, I'll get my stuff, I'll let the students try to go through, but it was raining. And then, you know, fortunately, I had the opportunity to get in my car and hit that gate. But to see our students lined up. Going back to their car for those that had an umbrella or jacket in the rain. That really, really, really did something to me. So when we're thinking, when we're talking about students, not just their tuition. Um, financial aid, that cost of how they pay, whether that is for their tuition, we know here at Compton. You know, we have the Oliver W. Connors, and students can um apply and they can attend. And their tuition and their books and other things are for free. So you say, well, what are they doing with that? It's really up to them, as long as they qualify. But um with the revamped FAFSA that's coming December first. It's very important to our students that qualify for the FAFSA as well as CADA. You guys know, um, talking that students that are within thirty four, um, thirty miles of our border. Undocumented students will now get in-state um tuition to go to col- you know, to go to college. But Dr. Curry, what is the percent, you know, of our students, uh, if anybody could tell? I know it's pretty high, because we're um headed and Hispanic-serving institution, but we're also like in the gaps. Where um underserved, I think, doctor. Um, what did he say, abandoned? What was the word? The doctor? Um, Dr. Mendez used, uh, he used, um. Um, abandoned, abandonment. So these things, whether it's um financial aid, FAFSA, CADA, basic needs, um, housing. Those are things that that can be a make or break. Of students that don't have the opportunity to get in their car and opt out of attending. You know, our distribution, our food pantry, or whatever. I had the option to do that, because I have choices. But I literally saw students standing in line. And if they had an umbrella, they went back to their car to get their umbrella or their jacket. To either get a turkey, I didn't see the students with the turkey, but I know that it was happening around about the same time. That really did something to me. So what we're doing here, the Compton Effect, I don't know how many people were there, but it was a lot of um of folks from. Around the area there, and the FAFSA and CADA um session, it was packed, it was standing room only. So getting the message out for our workshops. Making sure the students understand what does their financial aid package look like. Not having them sign up or hit the button to accept a loan when they really don't have to. That's really important, because we're talking about people's lives, talking about their livelihood. So with that, I just, um, one thing I do want to say. Um, for the record, if we could note that um Dr. Little did arrive at five eighteen today into the closed session. And I forget the time, I wrote down on what piece of paper that I have, or when she departed. Um, I think, I don't remember exactly where I went, I wrote it down somewhere. Um, Dr. Little, trustee Little left. I um gave her a few minutes to get to the door, so she departed at seven fifteen by the time she got to the door. I'll add that, and I think now with all that. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to agenda item number twenty. Which is our next regularly um agenda, a meeting will be December twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Close session will begin at five P M, and we will open up to our regular session. At six P M, and I would like to wish everyone, thank you for the opportunity to allow me to get on the soapbox. Um, just a little bit, have a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday. And um my meeting is going to be at what time? Give me some minutes here, nineteen fifty-five, I'll call it. Vice President. Now, the next time, we're gonna have to.